Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order today is Thursday, October 5th, 2017. It is 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 851 East Williams Street. We're also streaming on the Internet. Can we have a roll call? Who's doing it? Kathy for the record.
Supervisor Aboud.
Here.
Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwell.
Here.
Supervisor Barrett.
Here.
Mayor Kroll.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you very much. Can we call in our good friend Pat Propster of the Calvary Chapel to lead us in invocation and get us going today? Thank you, Pat.
Having upon all of our hearts, I'd like to read a couple of the scriptures that were put out by President Trump and Speaker. It says, "The righteous cry out to the Lord and hears, and he hears us; he delivers us from all of our troubles. The Lord is near to those who have a broken heart and saves those who have a contrite spirit. Many are the afflictions of the righteous, but the Lord delivers them out of them all." And out of John 15:13, it says, "Greater love hath no one than this, than he laid down his life for his friends." Lord, in light of the situations that are upon our nation, but even closer upon our state, Lord, we come to you, and our hearts are broken, and we are grieved and even confused at these events. But, Lord, even much more, we are resolved to press on and move forward, Lord, and be prepared at all times. And, Lord, my heart goes out to our first responders here in our community once again, and how grateful and thankful we are for each of those. And, Lord, I thank you for our city overseers, God, that have planning meetings like this and consider these things, Lord, because these are troublesome times, and people are troubled in their minds. And, Lord, I ask you that before somebody outrages that they would reach out to someone who can help. And, Lord, we ask you that you would move upon those hearts. And, Lord, in the in-between times, that you would give the wisdom and the knowledge and the heart for overseeing communities and peoples and large groups of people to those that oversee our cities and plan and commissions, Lord. Ask you for your divine intervention. Lord, for the hearts of those who have suffered the greatest of all loss, we ask you to bring comfort and peace and consolation for as much as you can, Lord, that those of us that are around each one, as it says in Corinthians, that we would comfort one another with the same comfort that we have been comforted with in times of trouble. So, Lord, I ask you that we would reach out that friendly neighborhood hand to one another and strengthen one another by care and concern, and just be there-ism, just to be there, or just to be next to someone and hold their hand, not even saying anything, just knowing that the camaraderie of the same heart is there. And we pray these things, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Always well done, Pat.
Thank you, sir.
Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. While we're standing, at least, we'll have a moment of silence. We're going to deviate from the public's agenda for just a little bit. I think everybody will understand what we're doing here, but I'd like to have a moment of silence for the tragedy, senseless tragedy that happened in Las Vegas two days ago. It is time I'd like to read a resolution that we're going to ask that the Board execute along with the sheriff and the fire chief. And the resolution reads as follows. "It's a resolution expressing support and solidarity with Clark County and the city of Las Vegas, Nevada, whereas on October 1st, 2017, Las Vegas and Clark County, Nevada sustained the worst mass casualty shooting in our nation's history, and whereas 58 innocent people lost their lives and over 500 were injured by an individual determined to kill as many people as possible who were attending a well-known country music festival, and whereas many lives were saved through the heroic actions of our first responders, citizen heroes, and medical personnel who continue to work nonstop caring for the injured. And whereas the Nevada family has a history of coming together during times of crises to offer comfort, care, and support to each other, and whereas Carson City, Nevada's capital, expresses to Las Vegas and Clark County our community's unending support to the communities of Southern Nevada as they work through the aftermath of this terrible and tragic event, now therefore be it resolved that the community of Carson City extends its steadfast support for Las Vegas and Clark County and offers to provide any assistance necessary." And we will, in a moment, we'll go down and we'll sign that by everybody, and I'd like to now offer, any members of the Board want to say anything about these? I know a couple of people do.
My heart aches for all of those lost in this senseless act. My prayer is for all those who are mourning the loss of their loved ones and whose lives have been ripped apart, for all who are wounded and trying to put their lives back together forever changed, for all who now suffer PTS and all that entails simply because they wanted to enjoy a festival of country music. My prayer is for all of those and for the healers and the heroes who are dedicated to healing physical, mental, and emotional suffering. God bless you all. And finally, my prayer is for those who have the power to change this, for their understanding, compassion, and action. Please stop the bleeding. The time is long overdue. Let it be known, the word "heartache" is not enough to express the pain, but the arms of this community are far-reaching, and we are here for you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bagwell.
Well, that, very well said. I just wanted from Carson City to send a message to Las Vegas, and so, I'm sorry, you made me cry, Karen. I want to share these with everyone, and we'll send some down to Las Vegas, because we are Nevada Strong.
And we'll attach a copy of this, we'll attach one of these to each of the resolutions going to Southern Nevada. John, you want to weigh in? Anything?
A good writer knows when to shut up. They've just said it all.
All right, if I could have the Board meet me down here at the table, then be joined by the sheriff and the fire chief. Thanks. We'll be sending those down in a formal backing, and we'll also have, we'll attach a copy of this so that when they read this, if they're made together, they'll have that. We have one like that and one like this, so we'll go on. I want to thank everybody for our indulgence this morning. These are difficult days, but I think much more I'm going to handle it. And so, I think right now, what we're going to do is, we're going to be in recess for about five or 10 minutes, and then we'll go on. Okay?
And I have some extras that I brought for those in the community that would like to have one to remember. Please share.
Come on up and get one. PC.
PC. It's for everybody.
That's right.
I, um, sorry. Right. Yeah. Oh, good, too.
Throughout the day, anyway, we'll take public comment at the end. All right, we'll now take up item six, possible approval of the minutes of September 7th. Everybody had a chance to read those?
I move to approve the amendments of September 7th, 2017, as presented.
There's a motion and a second. All right, we're ready to do this now? There we are. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Carried. All right, on the agenda, Mr. City Manager, I understand we're going to pull one from the consent agenda, 13 Alpha. Any member of the public want anything pulled from the consent agenda for particular discussion? I don't see any. Any member of the board?
Yeah.
13 Alpha.
13 a.
I'm sorry, 13 a. That's not it?
That's not it. It's 11 a, for me.
Oh, okay. 11 a, 11 Alpha will be pulled. All right, any, anything else? All right, I don't see any, so unless there's an objection, we'll take the, agenda is published, and we'll take up the consent agenda after special presentations, and we'll pull 11 Alpha at that time. All right, let's now recess from the board. Again, we'll go down here, and we'll have some special presentations on 4H Week and Fire Prevention Week. Where are our 4H folks? Okay, come on up here. Come on. Man, how you doing? It's good to see all you guys. It's good. All right. Think we can do this like this? What do you think? All right, this is a proclamation for National 4H Week, October 1st through the 7th. Whereas the Federal Act of May 8th, 1914, commonly known as the Smith-Leaver Act of 1914, has fostered through the United States Department of Agriculture the development of a system of state cooperative extension services in conjunction with our nation's land-grant universities, which disseminates and encourages application of research-generated knowledge and leadership techniques to individuals, families, and communities. Excuse me. And whereas the 4H Youth Development Program is a youth outreach program of cooperative extension emphasizing the importance of young people connecting to their communities, being well-informed, and engaging in civic affairs, developing leadership skills, and preparing for college, work, career, and life. Whereas on July 1st, 1914, the University of Nevada joined the cooperative extension system with the inauguration of the Nevada Cooperative Extension. 4H is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Carson City. Right on. 4H serves, serves youth in urban, suburban, and rural communities of Nevada, and is available to youth ages 5 to 19. Nationally, 4H is the largest youth organization empowering more than 6 million young people. Sorry, folks, I'm having trouble getting my breath back from having a little lung issue here earlier, but, whereas each of the 4Hs on the clover represent ways youth can grow and develop in 4H, the first H stands for head, for critical thinking, planning, and problem-solving. The second H stands for heart, for kindness, self-discipline, integrity, sympathy, and communication. The third H is for hands, for being useful, helpful, skillful, to learn by doing, and to serve others. The fourth H is for health, for choosing healthy lifestyles and to enjoy life. And whereas, as part of the 4H experience, 4H members are encouraged to learn about, learn about, and contribute to the betterment of communities to improve their quality of life and to expand their leadership abilities. 4H also utilizes a variety of community resources to enhance the educational experience of its members. The 4H program, like many other youth groups, relies heavily on volunteers who are involved in nearly every aspect of the program. Whereas, lots of whereases here. Lots of, lots of whereases. Whereas, the relationship between the federal, state, and local extension system has provided for citizen input for research and educational programs for over 100 years. The Carson City, Story County Office of Cooperative Extension has provided exemplary services to the citizens of this county through programs related to 4H, youth development, STEM, family development, and well-being, agriculture, nutrition, and horticulture. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowell, Mayor of Carson City, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors in our community, do hereby proclaim October 1st through the 7th, 2017, as National 4H Week in Carson City, and urge all youth and adult citizens to continue their support of Nevada Cooperative Extension and 4H as an important investment in the future of the citizens of Carson City, Nevada. It's a big deal, let me tell you. So, you want to give us a little, that's a long proclamation, but you can, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Supervisors. I'm Ed Smith, Natural Resource Specialist with the University of Nevada Cooperative Extension. However, today, I am acting Carson City Extension Educator, while Lindsey's on maternity leave. She became a mom on last Friday, and so I'll be filling in for her for a few weeks. I'll let my staff, my staff of this week.
Sandy Wallen, and I head up 4H and Youth Development Programs here in Carson City, also in Story County. And we thank you for your assistance and support of 4H. We think it's a remarkable program for our young people in Carson City.
I'm Marie Markovich. I'm the office manager here in the Carson City office, and I've been here since June.
I'm Karen Beatty, and I am the office assistant there, and I've been around for probably three years.
Good morning. My name is Jim Barcellus. I'm a colleague at Sandy Wallen's in the 4H Department, and I do a lot of STEM, after-school education with three or four sites here in Carson City, and we thank you for your time and the proclamation.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Supervisors, for your support of 4H and of cooperative extension in general. If you haven't been to a 4H event, I encourage you to do so. You will be very impressed. Thank you, Mayor.
I got to second that. They are truly impressive, and if you see these young folks, particularly out at some of the fairs, it's really wonderful to see what happens. I mean, in this life where we go through, you know, things get going faster and faster. We all live in a digital age. It's really good to see people coming back to where we used to be a long time ago, because that's how we learn. That's how we learn. So, 4H is a, is a, is a large part of that, and Future Farmers of America is as well. And Ed, I can't say enough about you. You're all, you're all over the place. In a good way, or? In a good way. So, let's go, let's go up here and get a picture. Come on, we'll go up here, come on.
Rachel, you've changed.
Yes. I'm quite as good-looking now. I cut my hair. I cut my hair.
All right, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. Thanks a little bit, thank you guys. Thank you. Thank you. We'll have one more.
Okay, next, we have another proclamation. This is for Fire Prevention Week, October 8th through the 14th, 2017. You see a lot of our folks here, come on up. You want to introduce our new deputy here?
I do.
Come on.
He's supposed to be up here, anyway. He's not following directions very well already. So, it is, it is my honor to, to announce that we've, we filled our vacant deputy chief, fire chief position with Chris Vaughn. Chris comes to us from Salinas, California, where he was battalion chief overseeing the medical division, the EMS division. He's a paramedic, has a bachelor's degree, and very involved in the California State Training System, and we expect him to do extremely great things here, and we're very excited to have him as part of the team.
As I said earlier, welcome to Carson City. We're a lot better than Salinas. All right, I'd say that facetiously. All right, this is Fire Prevention Week. Whereas, the City of Carson City, Nevada, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Carson City, and whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home construction. That's a really interesting statement. And whereas, many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments. And whereas, these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds. And whereas, a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. And whereas, home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household, and whereas Carson City's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Carson City's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas Carson City, Carson City's residents are responsive to public education, excuse me, and whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme this year is "Every Second Counts: Plan Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing home, a, a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowell, Mayor of Carson City, on behalf of our community and the Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community, and urge all people of Carson City to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of their household and practice it twice a year, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Carson City's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2017. Chief, I'd like to give that to you, and then you can add on to that.
Well, thank you. First of all, I'd like to, to introduce some of our staff. We have Jenny Williamson, our senior fire inspector, and then Casey, who is one of our new fire inspectors, just brought on about two, three weeks ago now. And then, of course, our new deputy chief, Chris Vaughn. Every year, we take a week out of October to recognize Fire Prevention Week and for civilian fire safety. It's actually historically based on the Great Chicago Fire, and where nearly the entire town, city of Chicago, was wiped out and destroyed by fire. In the United States, we lose over 3,000 citizens every year to home fires, or to fires, and home fires are the leading cause of fire fatalities. So, we, this year's theme is Seconds Count: Two Ways Out, and so we want everyone to recognize there are always two ways out of your home, and oftentimes, that is a window is your, is your most likely place. Fires today grow, as we call it, much faster than they did in the 70s and prior to that, and much of that is due to the furnishings in our house. Most of them are petrochemical or synthetic materials, so those burn much, much faster, much hotter, and the smoke is much more carcinogenic and deadly than in the years past. So, we want to, to take this moment to recognize Fire Prevention Week for next week. Remind everybody, check your smoke alarms, make sure everyone knows how to get out, and have a meeting place. One of the, one of the more common causes of fire fatalities is somebody going back inside to find somebody who's already out, maybe in the backyard or somewhere to that point. So, just take a moment, make sure you are aware, your family is aware, and your loved ones are aware of their two ways out, a meeting place. It's a simple thing that we can do. We can make it fun and entertaining for the kids, but we ask that you just take a moment to do that, so.
Chief, what happens if, if, you know, how many homes or apartments have two ways out? Rooms that always, always have two ways out?
So, great question. Residential requirements are that there are, there is a window in every living space in a residence. That's why we have windows in all of our bedrooms. And so, there, there should always be two exits. One, the entrance, the main door to the house or to the building, and then at least a window in, in every sleeping room.
That's good.
And on the good news, 10-year trend, we are down about 21% in fire fatalities. So, we are going in the right direction, and we want to continue to do that, and we believe much of that is built off of the education.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Chief. Anybody want, want to add in anything?
No, he did a great job.
Deputy, who's Chris? Are you okay? All right, come on, let's go get a picture. Come on. All right, we're now going to take up the consent agenda. We're going to pull for special consideration 11 a and 13 a, so we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of those two. Motion's in order.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published with the exception of 11 a and 13 a.
Mr. Mayor, the resolution for item 10b is 2017 R-35.
The motion will include that. Okay, thank you. All right, all right, on the motion, discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Pose nay? Carried. Okay, thank you very much. Let's take up now 11 Alpha. This is a possible action to approve the submission of a recreational trails program grant. Who's doing this?
Jen Budge.
Jen Budge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director.
Tell us what we're doing here.
Well, I'm really excited about this, because this is a great start at really trying to repair and replace our damaging infrastructure throughout our park system. As you know, we've been really working hard to try to assess our assets and, and figure out not only what we have, but what condition everything is in. We haven't completed that process yet, but I've visited every park in our system, and I can assure you that the, the trail system at Long Ranch Park is probably one of the worst, especially the entire park. This is a very large facility, and we get calls every week about this park for one thing or another, and the, the path system in particular is just falling apart. It's over 20 years old. I was in here, obviously, when it was installed. I'm not sure if it was really built to standards, but the asphalt is just deteriorating in several places. Access locations are really falling apart, and it's hard to get on that system. So, this would be a phased approach to try to address it. In your packet, you have a copy of a, it looks like this, and this is your sort of estimate of probable cost, and knowing how deteriorating it was, we brought in a consultant to just help us assess the condition of the pavement and come up with a plan. And we went to you in the last budget cycle and said, you know, we need to start planning for this and start putting money into our budget in our capital improvement program to start to rehabilitate these areas. Knowing that Long Ranch was one of the worst, I can't tell you that it is the worst, but I would definitely say it's probably in the top three after everything that I've seen, we wanted to start sort of putting the money away and start doing a phased approach to replace that. We requested $144,000 in our capital improvement plan for our entire park system to start doing a little bit every year. We received a little over 70, which is still great. We didn't have any in our budget before, so that's a tremendous increase, and we appreciate that support. But we need to make sure that we're not only leveraging that funding, but trying to find, you know, every funding source possible to try to take that money and turn it into more. So, what this proposal is for you today is a request for a recreation trail program grant. We go after these every year. This program is wonderful for our park system. We've been very successful with that. It's federal funding passed through locally, through the state, and it's managed by the national, or the, the state park, Nevada State Parks, sorry, I can't talk today. And we work with them on projects, and a typical application is about 200,000, so we try to go for that. We were trying to avoid prevailing wage and trying to get as much as we could on the ground with the funding that we have, so that's sort of why the numbers are proposed like they are. We have over $500,000 that's been identified for needs just at that park alone, just for the trail system. I'm not talking about playgrounds or any other amenities, and this will basically turn, you know, our small match into a pretty significant project. So, it is a phased approach. Public Works has a proposed project in the 2017 to 2020 timeframe on the north end of the park, so we'll probably start in other areas, because I would hate to put improvements in that'll be, you know, removed and have to be replaced again, and we don't want to duplicate any efforts or waste any taxpayer dollars and try to be efficient as possible. I do have a copy of the, the plan set, if anyone wanted to look into that, but I didn't include that. I was trying to, trying to save some trees and not, not give you too much paper, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, and...
Before we take up discussion, let me, I should have made this early on, but State Parks Works in the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. My son is the director of Conservation and Natural Resources. I don't believe this is a conflict. I mean, it's, it's a competitive application over there, so I intend to vote on it, but I just want to put that out there. Okay, all right. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm the one who asked that this be pulled from the consent agenda for a couple of reasons. I fully intend to support this. This is great. I'm glad you're going this direction. As I said to our city manager a few days ago, I would like to have you, if you haven't already, go back and find the agreement between the Long Ranch developers and the city on maintenance in that park, et cetera. I've never seen it. I don't know if you have or not, but if you have, we need to start from there in the sense that that's a contractual agreement we made, and we're probably stuck with it. I'd hope it's not in perpetuity, as some of our other contracts were, but at any rate, I'd like you to look at that, and I'd like to have a copy myself.
I haven't seen the development agreement, but I did ask our, our Community Development Director, Lee Plummel, to just take a quick look into that. Basically, you have two portions of that development, a portion that is managed under a property owner association and is more private. My understanding is there used to be a gate and a private road, and then that trail system was private, even though you can still use and access and enjoy that trail system, but they do maintain that. I'm not aware of a separate maintenance agreement where the other portions were dedicated to the city for the city's responsibility. So, these are only to cover, you know, those city-owned assets, not what's under the private, you know, property owners' association.
I understand. I, I just hadn't seen it, so I thought we should, you know, go back and take a look at that. I want to commend you for tackling this. I do recall at some point, meetings ago, and I've only been here nine months, so I don't remember exactly when, but you said that you were going to do an assessment of what needs to be changed and what needs to, you know, continue, and that's when the development agreement came into my head, because I knew that was in existence, but I'd never seen it.
And this is a great example of sort of that informal policy that we have moving forward as we get new parks in our park system. There's going to be a property owners' association, or a homeowners' association, or some kind of partnership where the park is still available for the public, but that new development is going to fund 100%, maintenance of that, because we can't keep adding to our existing park system and be sustainable. It's just not, it doesn't make good financial sense.
I agree completely. Lee, did you have something to add?
Good morning. Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. Just in a cursory look through those files, I actually, I actually don't think there is a development agreement, because the, the property was intended to be dedicated to the city from the start, so the, so the city owned it, so there's not an agreement on the maintenance. It belongs to the city for those...
So these are only to cover, you know, those city-owned assets, not what's under the private, you know, property owners' association.
I understand. I just hadn't seen it, so I thought we should, you know, go back and take a look at that. I want to commend you for tackling this. I do recall at some point, meetings ago, and I've only been here nine months, so I don't remember exactly when, but you said that you were going to do an assessment of what needs to be changed and what needs to, you know, continue. And that's when the development agreement came into my head because I knew that was in existence, but I'd never seen it.
And this is a great example of sort of that informal policy that we have moving forward as we get new parks in our park system. There's going to be a property owners' association or a homeowners' association or some kind of partnership where the park is still available for the public, but that new development is going to fund 100% maintenance of that because we can't keep adding to our existing park system and be sustainable. It's just not, it doesn't make good financial sense.
I agree completely. Lee, did you have something to add?
Good morning. Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. Just in a cursory look through those files, I actually don't think there is a development agreement because the property was intended to be dedicated to the city from the start. So the city owned it, so there's not an agreement on the maintenance. It belongs to the city for those portions of it that do belong to the city. But we'll go back and dig further and see if we can find anything, but I actually don't think there's a development agreement.
So the agreement, the agreement actually was, we own the property.
There's a dedication of the property, yeah.
So we have to maintain it.
Yep.
Anything else? Anybody? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in on this? All right, motions in order. If somebody wants to make a motion, we'll see where it goes.
So I move to approve the submission of a recreational trails program grant application by the Parks, Recreation and Open Space Department for Phase One of rehabilitation of the path system in Long Ranch Park.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, ready? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you. All right. Getting pretty good at that. Yeah, all right, all right. Let's take up the sheriff issue. Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant. Mr. Albertson and Lisa, how are you? You brought up the big gun with you.
Yeah, I did.
All right.
For the record, Steve Albertson, Under Sheriff. This is requesting approval of the grant for the Edward Byrne Grant. And this grant would be for, to help supplement Lisa's programs, Cops and Kids, Open House, the DARE program, Character Counts, Red Ribbon, the Halloween things. National Night Out helps support it. Doesn't cover everything, but it just helps to get a lot of the giveaways and help support these, that Lisa, you know, she does a great job, so she needs it.
I'll have to echo that. She does a great job. She's always out there doing something. All right, questions? Anybody? Anybody? Public comment?
One further thing is, that's part of the grant thing. We have to bring it for the board for public comment.
Right. Any public comment on it? I don't see any. Okay, then let's take a motion to approve the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant.
I move to approve the submittal and receipt of the 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, which is allocated to the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance for the Carson City Sheriff's Office Cops and Kids Prevention Services totaling $11,857.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Okay. Let's now take up the irregular agenda. This is item 15Alpha. This is with respect to the Carson City Airport Authority. I'm going to turn the gavel over to the Mayor pro tem and read the following disclosure. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I am counsel, I am sort of counsel for the law firm of Kemfer Kroll where Mr. Takis, who is going to be presenting here today, practices law and I consider him a close personal friend. And this board, the Board of Supervisors, is the one who appoints members of the Airport Authority Board who in turn appoints their counsel. Therefore, a reasonable person in my position would be affected by this relationship and I will abstain from participating in this matter. I'll turn it over to you, okay?
Good morning, Steve. How are you?
Good morning.
Do you want to take us through this?
Steve Takis, Airport Counsel. This item is an extension of a lease agreement. As the board knows, we do is we lease bare dirt at the airport. Investors come in, bring in private funds, build hangars, and then we get both the lease revenue, the real property tax on the hangars, and the personal property tax on the aircraft. This last fall, we presented extensions of three, no, five leases previously. And after working through the process with the board and with the parties, we ended up with what I think is a very sound method of extending these leases. These leases are aircraft storage-only leases. They are not full FBO leases. The statute doesn't allow us to do this with full FBO leases. But the statute that's out there that says with respect to aircraft storage-only leases, the leases can be extended so long as the extension is based on the fair market value of the property and that is supported by an appraisal. When we went through it last time, we obtained an MAI certified appraisal. It was 12 cents a square foot. We have since updated that appraisal because the appraisal has to be no later than six months, you know, current. And the appraisal came in at 13 cents, positive thing, values are going up. And so we have one lease that's before you to be extended and reset essentially for a 50-year term, and that's with the Byard Family Trust. The same conditions that we applied to the last set of leases apply to this one, namely there is a provision in the lease for a CPI increase every two years, but then every 10 years, we can do a look at the actual fair market value based on appraisal and reset that rate. We have a provision that requires ongoing investment and maintenance of the hangar, which we have calculated at a rate of 3 cents per square foot per year, which is to be trued up every 10 years. And we have a provision that says that if the change of use were ever to occur, for example, if this hangar were changed from aircraft storage-only to full FBO use, the rate would immediately jump to the full FBO rate, which is approximately twice the aircraft storage-only rate. In addition to that, Mr. Byard is paying an opportunity cost payment as, basically a payment to allow us, to consent us to go ahead and extend the lease. He's paying us $14,306.95. That was calculated on the same basis that we calculated the other leases. So for all practical purposes, this is following in the footsteps of the extensions you had granted earlier this year. You'd actually granted them in January, and so I would request your approval and I'm available to answer any questions.
Steve, I just have one question pursuant to some of the previous discussion that we've had on these leases. Has the hangar been inspected to determine what's being stored, if it's aircraft or other?
Yes, as a matter of fact, it has. And actually, I was, I've been in the hangar several times over the last couple of months. Mr. Byard has an absolutely beautiful Bonanza aircraft in there and the aircraft is flying much of the time. So it definitely meets the FAA standard of aeronautical use. On that same topic, we are in the process of implementing the ordinance that you folks approved. And I'd say we're probably about 90, between 90 and 95% complete on obtaining all the information which was required under that ordinance. The next step is to go through the information, determine which hangars require additional follow-up and/or inspections. Plus, we will be doing some inspections because the FAA has asked us to inspect certain hangars, and so we'll be doing that as well. Yeah.
Board, do you have any questions? Is there any public comment regarding this issue? Seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the board for a motion. I move to approve the amendment to extend the airport lease between the Carson City Airport Authority and the Byard Family Trust. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And now I will, and one absent. And I will return the gavel back to the mayor.
All right, we're going to take up item 16Alpha and probably 16Bravo. They're kind of, they are related. So first, who's going to do 16? Who's going to do it? You, Lee? All right, before we get started, let me read a disclosure. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict in my private commitment. I am sort of counsel for the law firm of Kemfer Kroll, and although I'm retired, I do maintain an office in the firm. However, I don't receive a paycheck or pension. The firm, which has offices in Carson City, Reno and Vegas, represents marijuana industry clients. However, none of the attorneys in the Carson City office represent Carson City marijuana establishments. Further, the item before the board will affect all marijuana businesses the same. No one entity stands to gain or lose any more than the other. Therefore, under the ethics laws, unless there's a disqualifying conflict, I'm required to vote, and I will be voting on both the 16Alpha and 16Bravo. All right, go for it.
Good morning again. Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. This is a second reading of the ordinance regarding marijuana, amending Title 18, the zoning provisions for marijuana in Carson City. This is second reading. At first reading, I just did note a couple of changes that were made and have been made in the ordinance. There was a discussion about grandfathering provisions for existing operational marijuana establishments, which in this case would be a marijuana distributor. There's, so that has been added per the direction in first reading where such facilities are grandfathered until January 1st, 2018. Secondly, I'd just like to note in late material, a technical marking correction on page 58 of the ordinance where we added that marijuana establishments under the prohibited section need to be bold and underlined for the ordinance for the purposes of the clerk, and there are no further changes besides that for second reading.
Any comments to you after first reading? I know you got somebody who was going to comment about that. Before we get there, let me just find out. Well, go ahead. Go ahead, come on.
To answer the, no others, but I think that besides the issue she's about to speak to, we've had no other comments regarding changes to the ordinance.
All right, thank you. Hello again.
Hi, good morning, Mayor. Members of the board, good morning. I am here happily to announce that my client Paladin has actively already started working to try and relocate in accordance with this board's clear direction at the September 21st, 2017 meeting. In doing that, we have run into some technical, I would say, roadblocks that have made it so we are going to be unable to comply by January 1st. As such, I would like to respectfully ask that the board provide an extension just of that date for the relocation. It's my understanding that that would not cause any need to come back for a first reading. It's just the one technical date change, nothing substantive through the ordinance. The biggest hangup, I guess, is that in order to relocate for licensing purposes, first Paladin will need to update its federal liquor license, which is through the TTB, and that is a fluid process. Processing times are up and down. It could be up to 90 days. Right now, we're looking at probably 60 business days. That is fluid. In September, it was around 75, and in July, it was higher than that. But it could go down as we go into winter, it could go up. However, we've been told up to 90 days. So from there, in order to get the state liquor license under NRS 369, the address change will have to be made on the federal license first. Otherwise, if they don't match, they won't issue the license change. So all of that, as well as securing and closing escrow on a building, will have to be done before any other steps. The latter steps are a little bit quicker. There's never been an issue with the speed that Carson City is issuing the local licensing stuff. They've been very accessible and I don't think that will be a problem in and of itself, especially because they're kind of a part of this process now, so they know the reasons for the move and everything. But there will have to be a secondary submission to the Department of Taxation so that that actual distribution license can be changed to the new address. There will have to be re-inspections by the Department of Taxation, presumably all of the fire inspections pursuant to local codes, et cetera. So a rough timeframe based on these numbers that we've obtained from the various entities. A minimum, we're looking at 165 days, and a maximum, based on the estimates, and this is assuming that once, once we get one, we're on to the next pretty quickly, within days. The higher number at the end of that is 225 days, and all of that's contingent upon essentially closing escrow within approximately 30 to 45 days from now. So it's a real tight timeframe. We, like I said, I'm very happy to report that we're doing everything we can to get on it. But before this went through for the second reading, we wanted to come to the board and respectfully request that that extension be made. The low end, the 165, would put it out to March 19th, and for 225 days, would put it out to May 18th. Just for a little cushion, we are respectfully asking that the deadline to completely be relocated and operationally completely out of the current location is April 1st.
Are you, is Paladin distributing marijuana today?
Yes.
To whom?
Recreational marijuana, retail dispensaries.
To Reno?
To Washto County, Clark County, I believe Washto County. Clark County, definitely here.
Excuse me, could you state your name for the record, please?
I apologize, Stephanie Rice.
Stephanie, and is Paladin also distributing alcohol?
They can, and they, I believe they have in the past. I don't know that they are doing it today. I don't believe so. It's a separate license. It has nothing to do with the separate longstanding capital beverages license from 1971.
Yeah, I got that, but you have to be, you have to be an active liquor wholesaler in order to get qualified under the state tax laws, as I understand it.
Correct.
To be a distributor. So are you, give me a hint as to whether or not you're doing that or not, you're complying with that?
Oh, I believe they're in compliance. I believe they have distributed alcohol. I don't think they're doing it today, but under the statute, I do believe they're clearly in compliance with it.
All right. Let me think about that a little bit. Stephanie, thanks. Okay. Supervisory bound and then supervisor prepared. Go.
Thank you, Stephanie, for reaching out ahead of time with regards to this issue. I'm adamant about the fact of consistency and getting all agencies on board by January 1. And I guess my question is to you and to Dan Yu. If the existing ordinance language included an addendum that says, or documented proof of pursuing compliance subsequent to the January 1, 2018 date, is that all right to add without being a substantive change?
You know, I think I would say for purposes of drafting and for clarity, I would be a lot more comfortable with setting a date specific into the ordinance for grandfathering purposes. And the reason I say that is because, you know, when you leave something in flux with respect to whether something is in the process or is pending approval by another agency, that just makes it a lot more difficult to enforce for, for local purposes. For grandfather specific reasons, I much rather prefer to have a date specific deadline in there. And I know that Ms. Rice has already presented a couple of options. I'm not advocating for, you know, the extension or the adoption of one date over another, but with respect to the business purposes, I understand where she's coming from. And just so everyone knows, I did have an opportunity to speak with Ms. Rice yesterday afternoon, so I understand where she and her client are coming from. I can't speak with respect to, you know, the federal side of things. I've not looked into that myself. I do understand that TTB, the Tax and Trade Bureau on the federal side, they do have sort of a, you know, as she had said earlier, a fluid process for the approval of the federal regulations. I can't really speak to that, but again, for purposes of our local ordinance, I'd be a lot more comfortable from a drafting perspective with just a hard date. You have that date to meet the requirement. Once you go past that date, you're zoned out. It's just, it's a lot more, it's a lot cleaner legally speaking.
So can we adhere to the January 1 date, 2018, for all else and just grandfather the April 1 date?
I'm not sure I understand what the question is.
In other words, in, for... respect to whether something is in the process or is pending approval by another agency, that just makes it a lot more difficult to enforce for local purposes. For grandfather-specific reasons, I much rather prefer to have a date-specific deadline in there. And I know that Ms. Rice has already presented a couple of options. I'm not advocating for, you know, the extension or the adoption of one date over another, but with respect to the business purposes, I understand where she's coming from. And just so everyone knows, I did have an opportunity to speak with Ms. Rice yesterday afternoon, so I understand where she and her client are coming from. I can't speak with respect to, you know, the federal side of things. I've not looked into that myself. I do understand that TTB, the Tax and Trade Bureau on the federal side, they do have sort of a, you know, as she had said earlier, a fluid process for the approval of the federal regulations. I can't really speak to that, but again, for purposes of our local ordinance, I'd be a lot more comfortable from a drafting perspective with just a hard date. You have that date to meet the requirement. Once you go past that date, you're zoned out. It's just, it's a lot more, it's a lot cleaner legally speaking.
So can we adhere to the January 1 date, 2018, for all else and just grandfather the April 1 date?
I'm not sure I understand what the question is.
In other words, for purposes of this ordinance, we want all else that, you know, I understand that they're making the inroads to change locations pursuant to our zoning. So if all else have to comply by January 1, only allowing this one grandfathered scenario to have that extended timeframe just to complete the process, can we set it up that way? It's essentially the same thing that I just stated.
I think I can finesse the language to accomplish that objective. I mean, I don't want to draft on the fly, is why I'm reluctant to commit on the record as to what sort of language I would be using specifically for this, but I think that I can come up with the necessary language to make it so that we can extend that time out for this purpose, but also make it broad enough to where we're not applying the ordinance language to one particular business entity.
With, thank if I can add, but perhaps, so the other provisions relating to recreational marijuana are actually in the next ordinance, Title 4, that don't allow the start of recreational retail marijuana stores until January 1st. So effectively, in this ordinance, changing the date really only affects this applicant because they are now, look, going through our list of businesses with licenses who are operating under the temporary. This is the only business that this date does apply to. So effectively, whatever date you choose only does apply for this ordinance, for the grandfathering actually only does apply to this business.
This is just, so Title 18 is just for the zoning purposes again, and Title 4 is just the issuance of the license to operate.
I know we've got a couple lights up here. Let me ask you, Dan, do we know if Paladin is distributing marijuana or distributing liquor today?
I do not know.
Again, I would just say from community development side, they have a business license with the city for each. We're not aware of the actual transactions. We haven't, so to the collection of the fees, we would actually know that, what, once the quarter's over and they submit for their business license fees for the marijuana distribution, we would know then that they conducted business, but until then, we don't actually know.
Suva Zerber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan, I'm worried about two things. One, the question of whether this is a substantive change or not. And you're our attorney for all practical purposes. Are you saying this is not a substantive change to change a date and grandfather them in?
I don't think that this is substantive to the extent where we would have to bring it back to square one, meaning requiring a first reading and a second reading.
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting at. I'm a little bit of a hawk on this issue. I don't like substantive changes and then second reading to go forward if they're not substantive, is technical language. It seems to me it's a substantive change, but I'll take your advice.
So, and what I'd like to do to make clear for the record is, when we examine that word substantive for purposes of that change, what I want to make clear for everyone is that it's not that it's merely technical. We're not talking about an abbreviation, or a comma, or the inclusion of, you know, making a typographical change here. I mean, it's substantive to the effect that it does have an impact on the grandfathering provision, of course, so that will impact, you know, certain businesses that are already in existence. It does not, in my view, require us to go back to first reading because if we look at the city charter provisions and also to the NRS provisions, state law provisions, that govern the adoption of ordinances by local government. The requirement there is twofold. You need to have publication, all right? And within that publication process, you have to set forth a summary and then also the title. The change that is being proposed today, if this board decides to make that change, would not necessitate any sort of an mandatory provision to the publication process, meaning we don't have to upend any of the language used in the title or the summary that's already been published, and therefore, we don't have to go back in time to first reading.
I appreciate that, and of course, you've just gone to the heart of why I feel that way about substantive changes. In a perfect world, people would read these ordinances out in the public, and then they'd come in and say, "Oh, I can't handle that." And some of them have on this one, but on any ordinance I'm talking about. So if you can assure me of that, I'll go along with it, although again, I'd love a perfect world if we could get it. Secondly, the term grandfather bothers me in the sense that that's really sort of a catch-all term that isn't a legal term, or if it's a legal term, you can tell me that. But are we, again, setting a precedent if we grandfather them that could back to haunt us should Mr. Brown decide to take Paladin in a different direction and say, "No, they've said we can be, so we should be able to be there forever." I just, again, I don't think that would happen. I'm not casting disparaging remarks towards him. I'm just saying, in a perfect world, I don't want him to come back to haunt us. And I've seen some things in only nine months that have come back to haunt us that are far different, but nevertheless.
I don't believe so. I don't believe we're establishing any sort of precedent where we're going to bind the city in any sort of, you know, a bad predicament here. As far as grandfathering goes, that provision, it's a sunset clause. It allows the existing businesses to continue up to a date specific. After that date, you know, what happens is a triggering effect of you're now zoned out. So that sunset basically applies to everyone. It is broad, it needs to be drafted that way, but again, we're not establishing any sort of a binding precedent moving forward with respect to other businesses. It's only with respect to this ordinance itself. But that's also a policy decision. Sunset clauses are always a policy decision. There's no legal impact of that as far as precedent establishing effect.
I'm relatively confident you're correct since we've written language into this ordinance that says we can yank your license for any reason. So I think you're probably right. Thank you for your help on this.
You want to add anything else?
I don't have anything if no one has any further questions.
I think we'll take public comment and see where we go from here. Anybody want to weigh in? Anybody? You don't have to. You can if you want. All right. I don't see any there. Board, what's your pleasure on this? This is, you know, I guess, you know, I was comfortable with going, you know, with a hard date of January 1, and I'm still kind of comfortable with that, although I also understand, you know, kind of what's happening here. But I guess, you know, if we do extend the date, I'd like to know from our DA and planning as to whether or not there's actually transactions going on in both the marijuana and the alcohol side. I'd like to know that. Pardon me? No, not now, but I'd like, I mean, you know, I think.
Right. What are we extending?
Here, Stephanie, come on back up. Here's the issue. If you're not, if you're, I don't, you know, I take your word that you're distributing right now, but I guess, you know, if I find out that you're not distributing, then, you know, I'm worried that, you know, we've made an exception for somebody who really doesn't comply. Now, maybe, I don't know, maybe you can help me with that.
I think I can. So a couple of things. Number one, I believe that we are coming up on the close of the first partial quarter. So you're going to have, you're going to get to see what has and hasn't been done by the business when you get those reports coming in, and I believe it's reasonably soon. The second thing is, I think we're talking about two different things. You're absolutely correct that if they're not complying in some other aspect of this business, their license is at risk either way. From my position, this is strictly a zoning issue. So if they're not complying with their license in some other manner, I don't think that has any effect on whether or not they relocate by a date certain in accordance with the zoning ordinance. If they're, I mean, if they're not complying with state law and the regulations on a day-to-day basis, they can have their license yanked tomorrow, and that has nothing to do with the zoning.
All right. I got the DA.
Mayor, you've been going through these items pretty quickly this morning. I don't see why you couldn't take a short break and have Ms. Rice, she could call her client and find out. We could even put her client on the phone if that would make you more comfortable before you voted on this item.
Yeah, go, go.
We're not at the discussion phase, but do you think they have to distribute liquor to be able to distribute marijuana? And doesn't that put them in a bad position with the?
Well, here, I guess, you know, I'm, and I take Stephanie at her word, but if they're not distributing now, I don't know what the harm is on just leaving it January 1 because they're not losing any money. They're not, I don't think anyway. So that's all I'm trying to get at.
You mean distributing marijuana, not liquor?
Marijuana or liquor. Marijuana or liquor.
Oh, I think I can clarify this. So currently, and granted, we are operating under some emergency as well as temporary regulations that are going to change in the near future, but in order, initially when Paladin got their license from the State Department of Taxation, the language in the ballot initiative under NRS 453D to 10, Section 3, provides that for the first 18 months of the license, the only people who can obtain marijuana distribution licenses are people who hold alcohol wholesale licenses under NRS 369. The provisions of that chapter essentially state that the requirements to be in good standing are that you are current on all taxes under that 369 license. So that is, was a requirement and is a requirement for a certain time period. It's currently on appeal and going back and forth, but the only way to get the marijuana distribution license for that time period was if you had a wholesale license, an alcohol wholesale license. So that's why it's not necessarily that, oh, if Paladin can't distribute alcohol for a few months in their new location, I mean, it is what it is. It's that in order to get the second distribution license as of right now, that could change any second, they would, they'd have to have their updated liquor licenses.
So essentially, what you're telling me is you don't need to physically distribute alcohol, you just have the license in order to qualify to get a marijuana distributor license. Is that right?
That's correct pursuant to the ballot initiative and 453D. And you, there are some additional requirements. You have to be current with your taxes with the Department of Taxation under that 369 license, being good standing, but there's no technical requirement in, currently in the temporary regulations that state you have to be actually distributing alcohol.
What a fascinating world this is. What a fascinating. All right. All right. I would like to know where Paladin is distributing marijuana today, if we could find, do you think you could find that out? Is that privileged or not?
I don't know that it's privileged, but there's some confidentiality requirements as far as locations and names. I can probably give you general, like, county information, but probably not exact destinations on the record. I know that they are and have been distributing in at least Carson City and Las Vegas.
Who are they distributing? I mean, how are they distributing in Carson City? There's no recreational marijuana here. They're doing it to the medical marijuana folks?
Correct. And if there's, for example, if a medical needs a transport and they don't want to do it themselves, then it needs to go to Las Vegas.
That's my, was my understanding, maybe I'm all wet on this, is that the medical folks are already doing it right now. I mean, they've been doing that for the last year, transporting their own.
Correct. They can self-distribute, and typically, that is what they do. There are some cases where if you have a medical and something needs to go to, for example, Las Vegas, that they will have a distributor do it instead of themselves for whatever business reasons, if other things are going down, if there's going to be a back trip anyway for a different reason, things like that.
Okay, and so I guess what you're saying is that if you're precluded from continuing to distribute marijuana until February, March, April, whatever that date is, you're going to lose business. Is that what's happening?
That's correct.
All right, Board. Learned hand, it's time for you to make a recommendation. Look, I mean, you know, we're going to, I mean, we're pretty hard on doing the January 1. I mean, that was pretty fast, and so, you know, I'm reluctant to go open that door again. I mean, I don't mind opening it up to say, okay, if you haven't complied with that, but you've made a good faith effort, you've got someone in escrow, yada, yada, you know, that's okay, but I'm worried. I'm worried, you know, and I'm not casting aspersions on anybody, I'm worried because I don't see any business transactions occurring that are going to cause a loss of business opportunity. That's where, you know, and if there was, it would, you know, help me make my decision because I get that. I mean, it's the same decision that the medical marijuana folks said, hey, you know, if we don't go July 1 and we go January 1, we're at a competitive disadvantage, but you know, they're in, that's it. So.
So I completely understand where Ms. Rice is coming from in terms of, and, you know, and I don't want to put words into hers, her mouth, or that of her clients, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I think.
She's very articulate, by the way.
Yes, she is, absolutely, and I think what they're seeking is some sort of continuity. I understand that there is, you know, some fluidity with the processing times. You know, when I was having this discussion with her last night, trying to wrap my head around it, you know, the first thing that I thought of was, you know, I'm not a US-born citizen. When I got naturalized, you know, for my application paperwork, going to the Texas processing plant, you go to the website, you look at it, there's no hard date on the federal agency site saying this is when you're going to have your paperwork approved and stamped. It's always within this flexible, fluid timeframe, so I understand where she's coming from. I also understand that the predicament that this board and the city is facing, which is we've already vetted and we've established a date, policy-wise, we're comfortable with this. I don't want to step out of my legal lane, so to speak, I'm going to keep my attorney hat on, but I also don't want to just say, hey, I want to be, I want to completely avoid the issue here. For grandfathering purposes, for sunset clauses, I think in reality, what we're talking about here, even though the language is written broadly, we're only talking about one business for ally purposes. I think that from a legal perspective, you set aside whether or not they're currently transacting business, whether they currently have their applicable state or federal regulatory approvals in hand. I think we just throw that out of the equation for today's consideration. The reason why is because I think really the only policy decision that needs to be made, which I can then effectuate through legal language for purposes of the ordinance, is do we want to or do we not want to extend that date specific for the sunset purposes of getting everyone out as far as transacting retail marijuana operations go from limited industrial? I think that's really the only question that we have to answer today.
Okay. John, I know you've got a question, let me just ask one. What's the current status of the distributor license from Carson City's standpoint? What's the timeframe? When's it expire? Forget this zoning issue here. When's it expire?
The business license is current and valid. I had a little bit of discussion after the last meeting, so there's actually not, the expiration date is, it's a wonky thing of our current business license system that because they're paying retroactively, it wasn't, it actually doesn't say June 2018, it says June 2017 on it for expiration, but again, that's just a wonky thing on the printout through our current system. It's a quarterly license, so it will be, we'll have the ability to pull it based on this expiration date.
So if we did nothing, when would the license expire?
What's the do-nothing scenario? I mean, if they were permitted to stay there, we would continue to renew it on a quarterly basis, they would pay quarterly, and it would continue, and if there was no grandfather clause, we'd have to inform them to stop immediately. And so we're discussing somewhere in between there.
So these licenses are quarterly licenses?
Yes.
All right. Let me think about that. Suva Zerber, I'm sorry, I was stepping on your light there.
No, that's all right. My question's been answered.
Let me think about that. Supers, Barrett, I'm sorry, I was stepping on your light there.
No, that's all right. My question's been answered.
And that's a quarter, yeah, it's similar to a gaming license. Gaming is the other one that pays, that pays quarterly, so they have to come in and pay quarterly, otherwise it gets, once, once it's not paid, then it's no, then it's not valid.
And on this one, the next quarter ends when?
And quarter has ended now, so with, with this ordinance, we'll be look, and actually, the notices have already gone out to all the existing businesses that they're due in 10 days, because it's, although it's been changed to 30 days in this, so we'll give them the 30 days, but, so it's in the next 30 days, we'll be getting the business license fees for the, for the last quarter.
So suppose you left the ordinance as it is right now, how long can they operate? If they continue to remit fees, how long can they operate?
This, this business in particular?
Yes.
Till, till January 1, 2018.
Want to add anything, Stephanie? Sometimes, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, just as a practical matter, if Paladin does not close escrow on a piece of property, pretty much within the next two to three weeks and start this process, they're not even going to make the April date. So, I mean, if, when I say these timelines are, that's how short they are, if this doesn't start the ball rolling immediately, which fortunately, there are some identifiable locations that meet the zoning requirements that are suitable for relocation for Paladin, if those are not, if escrow's not opened and they don't close in the next 30 to 45 days, to be able to then start submitting for the location changes on the licenses, I don't know that they'll have it done by April, even if they comply with every single timeframe, because if they don't start until December, they're, they're going to be way behind. So if the concern is that by granting the extension, Paladin's just going to kind of live it up and wait until February, March, April to decide to get it together, there's, it won't matter, there's no way.
Okay, that's, that's my concern, that's the heart of it. Okay? If, if they didn't, we've already, then, and we extend this date to April 1, then we've done it for no reason, and January 1 was a hard and fast date that we really wanted to adhere to. And we have one instance that we're dealing with here. So I guess I'm having difficulty with the fact that I want to keep the January 1 date, with the exception that the grandfather have an April 1 date.
It's just one date fix in the, right, it's just, it's just one date fix in the part that says any of the licenses on the prior expire, and right now, it says January 1, so, and you have to decide if we want to change that one date to a different answer.
I think I can clarify a little bit. So it states that, the ordinance essentially reads that everyone who has an establishment must come into zoning compliance by such and such date. Under that ordinance, there's only one license that needs to come into compliance, so presumably, as long as there's not a current license application pending that they grant on a temporary basis and say, okay, you can work out of this location, but you only have until this date, which I can't imagine interim licenses would be issued, then the date change absolutely only affects this one business without changing anything else, because the additional stuff in the next agenda item is in Title IV.
All right. All right. Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Interesting.
I think we'll have something to say.
I don't know, you want? It's up to you, want to weigh in?
This does not change our date, yes?
Does not change? I mean, that's a substantive change.
This is just zoning, anyway. I just want to remind everyone, this is Title 18 zoning, this is not...
Well, I guess, you know, you know, just to throw something out there, I guess, you know, at the end of the day, you've got an operator that's operating right now, we'd like, you know, we went hard to get January 1. I mean, if you can't, if they can't make it, you know, I'm okay going to April 1 if we, if that's going to solve this issue. I mean, I wish you'd brought it up at the last meeting, I mean, because that's kind of where I was going, you know, if, how much business you going to lose, what is, all that? But we are where we are, and so, that's, that's my two cents, Board, so make, you want to take a recess and think about it?
Yeah.
All right. We'll be in recess for five, 10 minutes to contemplate, all right?
All right, we're going to bring the Board of Supervisors back to order. Lisa, how are you doing?
I just wanted to thank you for those hard questions you were asking. You're my favorite mayor, besides Giuliani.
He's also your only mayor.
Well, believe me.
All right. Solomon is back in... Back on the agenda. All right. Somebody want to try a motion? See where it goes.
Ordinance number?
Yes.
2017-21.
I move to adopt Bill Number 124 on second reading. Ordinance Number 2017-21, or 24?
21.
21. An ordinance relating to marijuana. Amending Title 18 zoning of the Carson City Municipal Code to establish various provisions to allow marijuana retail stores as a conditional use within the general commercial and general industrial zoning districts located within certain areas of Carson City. To establish various provisions to allow marijuana cultivation establishments, marijuana product manufacturing establishments, marijuana testing laboratories, and marijuana distributors as a conditional use within the general industrial and general industrial airport zoning districts located within certain areas of Carson City. And to revise certain provisions relating to development standards concerning land use and site design governing medical marijuana establishments to include marijuana establishments with the corrections as noted that Lee presented earlier.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Sue Harvey Barrett.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the last reference. If you could clarify what it means, I'd appreciate it.
The last reference was the documentation that Lee provided us, that there was just some clerical things that had to be addressed.
Late material.
Late material.
But in other words, we're sticking with January 1.
Correct.
All right. I would... Okay, never mind. All right, on the motion, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Anything further to come before this? Motion passes. All right. Let's take up 16 Bravo.
This 16 Bravo is the ordinance action to adopt Bill Number 125 on second reading. It's the ordinance related to amending Title IV relating to business licenses for marijuana. There's, besides some technical changes in the... From first reading, the only substantive change was at the direction of the Board of Supervisors, and there is late material on this and that. And those changes are provided in the late material on Page 9 of the ordinance, Paragraph 9 relating to the requirements of what to submit with the business license fees on a quarterly basis. So the way it's been written by Dan here is to not be too specific on the documentation, but gives us the flexibility to ask for the actual documents that we need to verify and get the correct business license fee. So with that change, we've received no other comments on the ordinance for second reading.
Board? Anybody? Public comment? Anybody? I don't see any. We're actually going to do this without having...
We're moving right along.
All right. Motion's in order. Go.
Is it 2017 R22? Okay. I move to adopt Bill Number 125 on second reading. Ordinance Number 2017 R22. An ordinance relating to marijuana amending Title IV License and Business Regulations to establish various provisions for the issuance of a business license to operate as a marijuana cultivation facility, marijuana product manufacturing facility, marijuana distributor, or marijuana retail store. To repeal various other provisions relating to the issuance of a temporary business license to operate as a marijuana establishment. And to repeal provisions establishing a moratorium on the acceptance of applications for a business license to operate as a marijuana establishment to include the late material as submitted.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion discussion?
Yes, I'd like to...
Discussion's in order.
I'm probably beating a dead horse here. I haven't liked any of this since the start, when we voted in this state to go to recreational marijuana. But it is what it is. Here's where we are, and so I've even seconded this motion. There are going to be problems. We'll deal with them. That's just the way it'll have to be.
Right. Further comments? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried unanimously. Okay. Let's take up... Title 7... Item 17 Alpha. Tiger Grant. Lucia? Did I pronounce it... You know what? I got to get your name down. I got Lucia. Is that right or wrong?
Mr. Mayor, I respond to many variations of my name.
No, no, you got to tell me.
Lucia.
Lucia?
For the record.
All right, Lucia. I got it.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to say it. If I say it out loud here, I got it. All right, go.
Good morning. Lucia Maloney, Transportation Manager with Public Works. The Public Works Department is seeking approval from the Board of Supervisors to submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation Investment Generating Economic Recovery. It's a Tiger discretionary grant program. And this is for funding for the South Carson Complete Streets Project. The city's grant project... Policy requires any grant applicants over $50,000 to be approved by the Board of Supervisors prior to submittal by staff. So what is the project and the program? The Tiger Grant Funding is a highly competitive discretionary grant program. It's one of the most competitive transportation infrastructure grant programs in the country. The consideration of projects emphasizes improved access to reliable, safe, multimodal transportation improvements for communities. And this year specifically, they're targeting rural areas such as Carson City. The South Carson Complete Streets Corridor Project will drive economic growth and investment directly into the heart of our capital. And it will improve safety, improve business access along the corridor, provide lighting and landscaping, and really start to transform the gateway to our downtown. As you know, the city's investing over $10 million into South Carson Street upon relinquishment of the facility by Nevada Department of Transportation. We always knew that the section from Fairview up to Fifth Street connecting downtown needed to be funded by grant funding. So staff have been actively going after grant funding. This opportunity represents a unique opportunity in that it can provide a large sum of money that will help us complete this project all at once, from Fifth Street all the way south to the interchange. As I mentioned, the program is competitive. Last year, there were roughly 550 applicants, of which 40, roughly 40, were awarded. The city has contracted with WSP, formerly Parsons Brinkerhoff, to assist us in developing the most competitive grant application that we can possibly put together. So the city's putting everything into this. It's been all hands on deck with city staff, providing WSP with the information and the background and the technical details to really put together a competitive grant package that's going to help us win. Financial information. The staff report did note that there's a 0% match required of rural applicants, which is true. However, it incorrectly stated that, in this instance, Carson City is a rural applicant. I apologize for that error. For the Tiger Grant specifically, we are not a rural applicant. We are an urbanized area. However, trivia fact, we are the smallest metropolitan statistical area in the country. So we will be noting that in our application package, that we are urban, but we are very small. When it comes to rural applicants and small urban applicants, it's very uncommon for them to present a grant package with this much money and this diverse of a set of funding sources. So WSP, and we've spoken with staff from NDOT, feel that our package and our project specifically are very competitive. Should the grant not be awarded, of course, the section from Fifth to Fairview will be delayed until sufficient other grant funding is identified. While I'm up here, I did want to congratulate our own Haley Lang. She submitted an article on the recently completed South Carson's Complete Street Corridor Study that Kimble Horn helped us with earlier this year. That was accepted and was published in the Fall 2017 Nevada Planner Magazine. The focus of that article was the multifaceted public outreach approach to develop a community preferred design for South Carson Street that's going to be proposed as part of this grant package. So that was exciting for us. And I did also want to mention that this week Carson City did host the Nevada APA, American Planning Association Conference. So that was another opportunity for us to showcase the recently completed downtown Complete Streets Corridor Project. Folks are getting really excited about downtown. We received great feedback. They're getting excited. And so this Tiger Grant opportunity builds on that excitement to really connect downtown to the interchange in a way that can reinvent ourselves and really open that gateway up for business. So today, you're being asked to approve submittal of that grant application package. This concludes my comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Lucia, first of all, I want to thank you for your response on King Street. That was great, and so I'm glad that the speed issue is being addressed.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Also, for the record, I'd just like to ask the mayor, the city manager, to discuss a little bit about your meeting with State Lands with regards to the Armory.
Well, we brought in the Marines and the Navy to make sure that we made the point. But it's kind of a novel situation, and it's going to get worked out. I kid a little bit. But as part of the street turnover, we get all the frontage roads, with the exception of the one right in front of the Armory. And that's owned by State Lands. So we were talking to State Lands. You know, we really need to have that or the Complete Streets analysis... Complete Streets ability is really broken up there. So, you know... And I think that they understand that, and we'll work through that and get that done. At the same time, we've also told them, you know, that if it helps, we can find other locations for the... Because they're holding it for the Highway Patrol, Maintenance Yard, and all that stuff. If we can find a suitable location for them that's kind of the same size, it would be nice to maybe swap property so that we could use that old Armory property as developable property down here. And there are lots of ideas about what to do with that. But we'll see where that goes. So that's what's going on.
Thank you. And I just want to applaud the aggressive approach the city's taking to this Tiger Grant. Thank you.
And I'll also mention, you know, the city manager and I have met with some national folks who have, for lack of a better word, lobbying expertise in this area. They can push. And so, you know, we're trying to decide right now, you know, see what we come up with, as to whether or not, you know, if we're going to go all out, we'll get support letters from the governor and our whole entire congressional delegation. And then we will make sure that, you know, if we need... If we need help to, you know, to walk things through, we'll do it because this is an important grant. So, I mean, so we'll keep everybody up to date on that. Mr. City Manager, did I miss anything?
No, that was a good summary.
All right. Sue Harvey Barrett, sorry.
Thank you. Lucia, could you go into... Is that the 50,000 population cutoff on that rural-urban that you'd mentioned?
For the specific grant, they look at the census designation of what's called an urbanized area. They have a very specific list, and if you're on the list, you're considered urban for this grant. We are on the list. Bottom line is, we have 55,000 population, which is... We're right at the cutoff.
Is there any avenue in this grant to make the point that we are a combined city-county municipality, which takes in what used to be a county area, so that our population is swelled by that? Or does that make any difference?
It does make a difference. And yes, we are making that case, highlighting the trivia fact I provided earlier. We serve, you know, as the capital, but we're also the shopping hub, of which folks from hours away to the south and to the east come to us for commerce and shopping and other activities. And so we're highlighting that key role that this corridor plays in the state.
Got it. You know, there's another one where we're also looking for... I know we look for grants everywhere, and we should. But, you know, we... Federal EPA came out and did a Greening of America's Capital analysis on, you know, the Highway 50, William Street into Carson. And that, you know, the engineering has been mostly done on it, I think, right, Darren? I'm going to see him shaking his head. He said yes. So, you know, we'll be looking for grants on that, too. So, you know, maybe this is the time when we want to really step... Put our foot on the gas on some of these things and see if we could, you know, make it happen. Because I think it's about on the EPA Greening of America, that's probably 10 million there, too. Okay?
Yes, sir. We are looking at grants, and I appreciate you bringing that up. I should have also mentioned that currently, you heard from Mrs. Budge from Parks early on the Rec Trails Grant. The city's also going after a Rec Trails Grant for part of the multi-use trail on this section of the corridor, just north of Clearview, connecting what NDOT has already constructed. So just because we're going after Tiger doesn't mean we stop looking. We're actively going out for additional grant funding opportunities to continue to improve other areas of our community as well.
All right. Anybody else? Public want to weigh in? Darren, you want to weigh in? All right. I don't hear anybody. Motion's in order.
I move to approve submittal of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation or Transportation Investment Generating Economic Recovery, Tiger discretionary grant funding for the South Carson Street Complete Streets Project.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried unanimously. Okay. Thank you very much. Lucia, good job. You might put in that application, too. This is, you know, you're a new employee here, and you really need to get this happen.
I need to win. I need to win.
It's part of your long-term job security. Put it right in there. Okay. All right, thanks. All right. Let's take up Stormwater. Oh, boy. Okay. All right.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Board members. David Burkett.
Good morning, Mr. Burkett. How are you?
This item right here is the business impact statement for the proposed rate increase to the Stormwater rates, 30% rate increase to the Stormwater rates. So we prepared a business impact statement, notified the trade associations, which in this case turns out to be the Chamber of Commerce and the Builders Alliance. We did not receive any feedback, any comments back from them on this. We made the records available also at Public Works, so there were no comments associated with this. Our finding is that, you know, it does impose a direct and significant, you know, economic burden... I need my glasses to read this. ...on a business or directly restrict the formation, operations, or expansion of a business. As part of this presentation, I wasn't planning on going through any details, you know...
I think we know what's going on here.
We followed the... So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We've been discussing this for a while, and I know the UFOC has been talking about it, too, as well. All right. Public comment? Anybody? Board? Motion's in order to make a finding that there is a significant impact. Substantial impact.
I move to find that the proposed ordinance amending the Carson City Municipal Code Title 12 Water Sewer Gin Drainage, Chapter 12.17.040, service charge rates by increasing the monthly rate by 30% for each property classification does impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business, or directly restrict formation, operations, or expansions of a business, that a business impact statement has been prepared in compliance with NRS 237 and is on file with the Board of Supervisors.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried. Let's take up the rate increase that supports this.
Okay, this is the first reading for this proposed change. And the change that is associated with this, as it went through this review process, the table in here, which was the rate change, we had the District Attorney's Office did a very extensive thorough review to just clean up a whole series of, you know, changes, technical, grammatical, writing styles, and you'll... That's reflected in everything that here is attached. I'm happy to answer any specific questions you may have about some of these. We have the District Attorney's Office here, too, if you have any specific questions.
I suspect I know the answer, but this has been through the UFOC, right?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Public comment? Anybody? We've talked about this at length, too. So, I mean, not that we'll give it a short shrift, but we've talked a lot about how we're going to approach this. So, motion's in order if we want to make a motion.
Bill Number 126.
I move to introduce on first reading Bill Number 126, an ordinance amending Title 12 of the Carson City Municipal Code to increase the rate of stormwater service charges levied upon all developed real property located within Carson City. To revise provisions establishing the procedure by which to protest stormwater service charges and fees, and to make non-substantive changes to provide technical, grammatical, and structural corrections for legal clarity.
There's a motion and a second. On the motion discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. Let's now take up the second reading on the bond. This is Item 18 Alpha. Nancy? Are you deputy now, or are you...
I am. This is the first time I'm going to say Nancy.
Your deputy dog, or what are you?
Nancy Paulson, Deputy City Manager. This is the first time I've said that.
All right. Just want to make sure you know what hat you're wearing.
This is just the second reading of the ordinance to issue 6 million in sewer bonds. And they're anticipated to... The sale is anticipated to close at the beginning of November, and we'll lock in the interest rate in the middle of October.
All right. Any changes? Anybody get ahold of you since first reading?
No.
No? Okay. Public comment? Anybody? I don't see any. We've discussed these a lot, so motion's in order.
What's our ordinance number? 2017-23.
I move to adopt Bill Number 123 on second reading. Ordinance Number 2017-23. An ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of... of the Board of Supervisors of Carson City, Nevada, providing for the issuance of general obligation limited tax sewer bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2017B, and the maximum principal amount of $6 million, and providing the form, terms, and conditions thereof and covenants relating... Oops, she... Relating to the issuance.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried. Okay. Let's take up the last item under the formal agenda. This is to appoint one member to the revised VNT Railroad Commission. The board, the packet indicates that it's my suggestion that we put in the city manager, because right now, there's... It's the Director of Visitors Bureau, and then it can be one of us. If one of us wants to take it, we can do it. I've been there eight years. It's probably time for, you know, a different set of eyes. Not that my eyes are all that bad.
Yeah, I was like...
But also, you know, I think, and last night I got a note from the Chairman of the Commission, Dwight Mallard, who indicated to the governor that he's gonna be stepping down, and so the governor will have to make another appointment, and so we can all be thinking about that as we go down here. I mean, the railroad is operating, and it's, you know, it actually, this year, it's finally starting to actually cover its costs as it goes down, and we have Polar Express coming up where we make a whole lot of money on it. But what I think, you know, we need is a little bit more structure in the Railroad Commission. It's a separate, independent commission. We need structure where they have somebody who, you know, can... Where it's not just the board that can actually oversee all the current events, and so it'd be my understanding that, you know, they want to go down that road. So that's my recommendation to the board, is we put the city manager... I'm obviously... I'm gonna be looking over his shoulder all the time, I do, anyway, but I think, you know, give that a try, and then we'll see. We should push very hard to get a chairman of this organization that comes from Carson City.
Isn't that what the Navy's supposed to do to the Marines? Look over their shoulders?
I know.
So I'll second that motion if it's a motion.
All right. On the motion, you ready? To appoint the city manager? All right. On a motion, further discussion, public comment? I don't see any on... Anybody? I didn't see any. Okay. Where am I here?
By the mayor and second. By John.
All right. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. There it is. Okay. Thank you, Kathy. All right. All right, let's take up...
I just want to thank those involved in getting Take Me Home Huey here in Carson City. That was a really profound and moving exhibit and documentary, and so I'm grateful that they brought it here.
Now that we're done with all the ordinances relating to marijuana use in Carson City, I would like to work with the cross-section of the community on ways to combat the use of drugs by youth and other impacts that drugs cause in our city. I think we had already started a group before that would really understand the needs, such as social service providers, Health Department, Sheriff's Office, School District, and the Fire Department. And so I'm interested in working with a cross-section to look at what impacts, where we see the next budget needs, and thoughtful use of any dollars that are gonna be received. And so I'd like to work with that group if we can continue that or put that together, because I believe the citizens are the persons that are the conscience of the community, and we need to do this right.
You know, it never ceases to... Amaze is probably the wrong word, I mean, but this board really takes on a lot of these things, and so my hat's off to you. It's a big topic, and it's a worthwhile topic. It's a worthwhile endeavor, so thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right, a couple things coming up. Next Friday is the Navy birthday.
No.
I'm looking at you.
That was a Marine response.
Yeah, man, that wasn't too... That was kind of weak. I mean, come on. And then I'll be... On Monday, I'll be speaking to the Nevada Certified Public... Let's see, the organization that they get credit for, for going through public programs.
Continuing education.
Yeah, it's their continuing education for Nevada employees, so I'll be speaking, presenting to them on Monday. There is leadership Carson City will be on the 18th, or else, as we're going here, I think. When's the badge pinning ceremony for... When is that one? Is that in November or in October?
No, I think it's October 14th.
The badge pinning?
It's the 14th.
Yeah.
Or 16th. I thought it's either the 14th or 16th.
Yeah, it's the 14th. It's 10 o'clock. That's a memorial ceremony.
16th.
And then...
You're right. 16th.
16th at 4 o'clock.
Oh, the fire memorial.
Okay, we'll be at... I think it's important for all of us to show, to be there at the Fireman's Memorial at Mills Park on the 14th at 10 o'clock, and then at 4 o'clock, we'll have a badge pinning ceremony at Station 51. Anything else?
I just want to add something. In support of the Arts and Culture Commission, just encourage folks to get out there and go to the Visitors Bureau and get your tickets for Capitol Collage, the costume ball that will be held, and proceeds will help forward arts and culture in our community.
Okay.
Which day is that one?
It is the day before Nevada Day.
Oh, I didn't get it with, I have to dress up?
Yes, you do.
I bought the tickets. Darn it, I missed something there.
Yes, you do.
Uh-oh. I bought the tickets, I might have taken back.
And let me, before we close here, let me thank Sue Fizer Bagwell for the patches that we're gonna be sending down to Las Vegas and also we're wearing. I don't have my coat on, but I know she and her friends spent a fair amount of time on that. They'll be available at City Hall if you need some, and, you know, Lori, my hat's off to you. Okay.
Just one more, I forgot. We are gonna do on November the 10th at 3 o'clock at Fuji Park, we're having a flag retirement ceremony. So we have bin in City Hall. If you haven't gotten your flag that needs retirement, please get it into the bin so we can get them properly retired, and we invite the whole community to attend. We have over 2,000 flags to build into a pyramid, so.
That in itself is phenomenal. That's a good word, phenomenal. Yesterday, the city manager and I went to a meeting at Miguel's in Reno to meet with the mayor and the city manager and others, and they canceled the meeting on us without telling us. So the city manager and I had...
We had great chicken mole.
You had chicken mole, yeah.
Phenomenal.
Anyway, you know, those things happen, but, anyway, okay. Anything else? I don't see any. Okay, we'll move to final public comment. Anybody? Anybody? I don't see anything, so are we ready to adjourn? Unless there's an objection, we're adjourned.